I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ward? Here. Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Ms. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last two meetings of March 20th, a regular meeting, and March 30th, our special meeting.
So move.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
One second.
Do you have any corrections? Hearing now, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion being carried, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here. Thank you for coming. And I don't believe we have any commendations.
I do have a commendation, but it'll be in my district report. I've got two kinds of things to share that are just exciting to see in my district.
Then we'll turn it over to our middle school. If you would like to begin, Mr. Gross.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Rob Gross, the principal here at the middle school. And I'm very excited. We've been in a lot of different programs over the years. I think you remember we had our PBIS program that came to share with the board. Obviously, that's a program that's helped our entire building and continues to help our building. As you all know also about the robotics program and how much it's grown from the start of middle school, from a few years ago, also now into the high school. So I'm very excited. So look over here, my two teachers that are responsible for this, Erica Gray and Sandy Ward. They had gone to a conference and they had listened to Jack Bruckmeyer, who's also been in our building, who's an amazing person, amazing speaker, amazing teacher. And they learned some things about this peer tutoring program that they wanted to be able to try in our building. So they wanted to be able to try it in sixth grade. It's something that we want to look forward to in the future as they continue to each grade level because, again, we think it's not only going to help sixth grade, but it's going to be able to help every single student in our building eventually. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Erica Gray and Sandy Ward.
Ms. Getzmann?
Yeah, thank you. There we go. So as Rob said, we went to a conference in the fall, which they helped send us there. So we were very appreciative of that. So it's called the Ohio Middle Level Association Conference. There was a middle school there. It's called Bel Brook Middle School. They presented about peer tutoring. And we went to that session together and we thought, this is great. We would love to try this. Like, the way they did it wouldn't quite have worked for us. So we came back. They were awesome and shared everything they had for the whole program. So we sat down one day after school and just edited and made it work for us.
So we were looking at, one of the reasons why we were excited about it is we were looking at some of the things we already have in place. Friday night school, homework help, those things are great, except for there are some kids who can't stay after school. Tier two, tier three interventions, they are not working on projects at that time or homework per se. So there are some kids that are just kind of left out. So we thought, maybe this would be something that we could try at our middle school. So when we came back, and like she said, we kind of tweaked it and we made it our own. And then we talked to all of our classes about it. And we said, you know, trying to come up saying, you know, if you want to apply to be a tutor, you can do that. When they filled out their forms, it was about, they recorded their grades and then why they thought they would be a good tutor. And then we sat together with our team teachers and we decided who we thought might be good tutors at that time.
And there's quotes throughout from the kids, actual tutors. So like this one, they said, I was able to make a new friend. Lots of the kids had made friends that they wouldn't have made otherwise.
And we found those quotes, by the way, we did a checkout form at the end of the nine weeks. So they were able to state things that they thought may be ways we could improve, but things that were successful for them, challenges they had and so forth. So we got some really cool quotes.
Yep. So we ended up with 51 peer tutors between the two of us and the other team. So this is just for this semester. So there were lots of other kids that applied, but their grades weren't quite there, or maybe there was a behavior issue or whatever issue. So I was kind of the lead of how we broke it to them. I said, hey, you know, like, we want you in the program. We're gonna hopefully do it next year and we would love for you to just work on that, get your grades up, and then reapply. Because, and we've had kids from the first time we did it to the second time that reapplied and were accepted. So it's helped. So we also, once we got the tutors, we did a tutor training session that the other schools shared with us. So we changed it just a little bit, but we did it with all of our tutors. So that's what we did before we started tutoring. We had 247 student sessions, so with a tutor and two T. And 114 different sixth graders were tutored. So lots of them came multiple times. So this is making a huge impact.
And I have to say, the kids are so excited about it. They will come the day of tutoring. Are we tutoring today? And they just love it. And so it's been really, it's been cool for us to see how it's working. They really stepped up, so it's nice.
And because it's such a new program, we don't have a whole lot of data about how it's impacted kids other than statements at this point.
Yeah. So we did start the program in January and, as she said, it has continued. It's currently going on. And again, we have had a lot of success with it so far. We've been really excited about it. It's a lot of hard work, maybe more than what we thought in the beginning. But that's okay. We're getting it down. We're doing things to kind of make it easier also on ourselves. But as I said, the kids are really excited about it and they want to be tutors.
And it's worth the work. So we've had lots of support from parents, the teams, the administration, obviously the other kids. So I'll let you read your quote.
Yeah, so, and I also wanted to personally thank Rob and Robin because we talked to them. As soon as we came back, we were like, okay, we need to have a meeting with them. And they were very receptive, which we appreciated. And so that's how we were able to start it. But then we talked to our team teachers as well. And we said, you know, what do you think about the program? And so the first quote, "I have seen leaders emerge from our tutoring program as well as students begin to take more ownership of their learning. This program has helped various students both academically and socially. As I've witnessed that, some of the best lessons learned are with our peers." And the socially thing, I have to mention, I had a few students who applied that when I saw they applied, I was kind of surprised because they're really quiet or shy. And they've really come out of their shell, which is kind of cool to see.
And the other quote, "I would be the first to admit I didn't imagine the tutoring program would have a big effect. I assume less kids would struggle, but I've gone from 20 to 30 students missing work in my class to less than five on a given week since it has started." So just to put it in perspective, we normally have between like 80 and 100 on our team. "The biggest surprise to me is that the tutors' grades have also improved. Having to explain content to others has improved their understanding of my material. I can't imagine not doing the tutoring system moving forward." So that was nice. So we also focus on English Language Arts and organization. So when we say organization, if you've ever had middle school kids, you know what the backpacks can look like sometimes. So we have some kids that maybe that's just what they do at tutoring. They just help organize and...
In fact, I had a couple kids today say, I need to sign up for a tutor. I need to get my, actually, I did. Maybe so.
And they work on essays and practicing skills even for ELA.
Right. And then also, we have math and we do reassessments. They do reassessments sometimes in math. So we've put together study groups where we'll have a couple of tutors and they'll use the dry erase boards for the group of kids. And then they'll kind of go over some concepts that they're learning, especially, I know when they started algebra, that was a big thing, that there were several kids that were a little confused about that. So we had people that were tutors that were really good in math and were able to do that. And that was the other thing that I wanted to, I guess, mention, that, you know, we've explained to the kids, we talked to them, that not everybody is good at everything. I mean, even tutors may need tutored every once in a while. You know, there may be a subject that you're not as strong in. And so it's okay. And we've had that happen, so...
And it's just normalized. They know, like, it's fine. If I have to tutor or I'm being tutored, it's fine.
Social studies is also another one. So if we have a test coming up or we have, you know, study guides and things like that, we'll put together groups as well. Reviewing grades, sometimes they will look on progress book with a student and see, what do we need to focus on? Do we have missing assignments, things like that?
How to prioritize things, because some kids need help with that. So we also focus on science. Sometimes kids will actually be doing a lab in the room. It can be really chaotic in one room because it's literally all the things happening at one time. We also focus on building educational and social skills. So something that I have started doing when they're done with work is not just, okay, go turn it in. Like, how are we going to have this conversation with the adult? How are you going to send an email? Let's talk through it. Like, the tutors know. So they're starting to build those skills that as they get older, it's not just awkward, like, here's my paper. It's, hey, Ms. Gray, I'm done with this, here.
And I will say, sorry to interrupt, but they do get little cards at the end of their session. It's a real quick card where they circle yes, no, did they finish all of it? And they can leave comments. And the number of comments we get are really sweet. Some of them, one of them was like, I, it went really well. I even gave her my phone number, just in case she has any questions.
It was so sweet, so yeah. And so these are our videos. Some of the tutors volunteered to create videos about the program for us to share for tonight, so... The one on the left one's fine. So we'll leave it with the kids because the ones with the experience and they appreciated it, so, thanks.
Now, when do you carve out the time and the day to do all of this?
Yeah. So we do that in our flex period. So it's already built into the schedule. We also do tier two during that time. We do programs.
We usually do two days a week. We'll do it. And I know our days aren't necessarily the same when we do it, just because our teams are different and when they do things differently. But two days a week. And, and boy, if you miss one week, they're really...
They're like, well, I didn't get two, so do we get one?
And I had to explain to them, we have state testing Wednesday, we're not going to tutor. Oh! Disappointed.
Where do you see it going, let's say, next year? I mean, this is your trial year. Really just sixth grade. Do you see it going to seventh and doing sixth again, or...
I definitely think it could go on into seventh. I mean, definitely, we're doing it next year for sure. And we would like to have time, I know, to meet with the seventh grade teachers and talk to them about it because these kids are all pumped up and they're ready to go and...
And it would be so much easier next year because these kids have the experience.
Right.
So like, the teachers kind of can just walk into it and those kids will lead it, you know? So it's pretty...
So I had talked to them about, like, here in May, once we get state testing done, we're gonna, I'm gonna have them meet with the seventh grade teachers because that's something that we want to continue to build upon, so...
And where do the, where do you have the children meet?
In, for my team, our teachers had decided that we would have them go, like, if a student is in one classroom that needs to be tutored, the tutor would go to them.
Okay.
But I try, and it's really difficult because you have all of these names and then you have the names of your tutors and you're trying to match kids and how it's gonna work. I don't put more than three tutors in one of their classrooms. If there are extras, I just put them in mine, you know? And, and so they're all monitored. And, but it's just, that's the way our team does it.
And my team's a little different. So I have a Google form that I have my team teachers fill out with what kids need what. And all those kids end up in my room with my tutors, who are my normal flex. So there have been days where I ended up with like 50 kids in my room. And they're doing math, they're doing science, social study, like, they are doing all the things and it's just like...
Organized chaos.
It's organized chaos, yes. But, I mean, you walk in and those kids are on it the whole time.
They really are.
Like, we're just there to answer questions, really. We don't really have to intervene.
No. And I said, every time, I swear, every time they come in, I'll say, how'd it go? How'd it go? Oh, wow, wow, you know, and I just, oh, my, awesome, awesome. And those kids, they really are, they're great.
Rob, can you share with the board, they talked about teams, and I don't know how much you all know about the teams, but we have two teams per grade level, right?
Anyway, well, we have three teams per, yeah, three teams. We used to have two and then we moved to three teams per grade level, so, so obviously at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So again, that's what we're talking about with this kind of this foundation of not only having to work with, let's say, like Sandy's team, but then Erica has to work with her team, and we also have a third team. So it takes a lot of organization and cooperation and, you know, as we kind of said, they were working, you know, they were willing to be the guinea pigs to try this, this project and obviously it's been very successful. So that's why I'm so excited to be able to, and the tutors are as well, you know, to be able to take this into, you know, for, next year for seventh grade.
Thank you.
We had some public participation and Mr. Tickle?
Some good stuff.
We have three minutes.
Right there. Some very good stuff. It's good that the kids are, it sounds like it helps with peer pressure and everything with the tutoring and all that. I mean, it just, yeah, very good. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for being on the board because I know it takes out of your time and I know you're, you're here because you care about the kids. And that's kind of why we're here too. I'm, I'm a pastor. I've got children in my fellowship in this school and I'm here to just say a little bit about the books that are in library. State Representative, we had a conversation with, told us that we should check out the selection online because there's a, a lot of districts that have books that aren't appropriate for children. And we've got, and we've come across some, some inappropriate literature in our, our middle school and high school here. That, honestly, I think it needs to be, it needs to be addressed. And it's not about censoring. What it is is about responsibility. I don't think anybody here would have obscene material in your home where your children or your grandchildren could have access to it, you know? I, I think it's, in a way, it's, it's responsible censorship to protect our children in our homes, right? And I, I think we use that same thing here. If you, if you don't, you know, it could be considered abuse, right? And I think we should use the same precautions in our school where we're dealing with young minds that aren't completely developed yet and they need our protection. They need our, our mature, you know what? Everything's blurry here. Because I forgot to put on my glasses and I'm, okay. So anyway, what we want to do is we want to make you aware and we're asking, and just as concerned citizens, that's why some of us are here today, we pay taxes, we vote, that you don't ignore this and just hope it'll go away. These are, these are children that we've entrusted with your care. And, you know, you actually have a law on, on your side to deal with obscenity in the library, which says that we're not to expose our children to obscene literature. Reno versus ACLU, Bill Number 521, US 844. Transmitting obscenity and child pornography, whether via the internet or other means, is illegal under federal law for both adults and juveniles. And obscenity is defined by our courts as anything that might include visual depictions, spoken words, or written texts. Okay? So this is a very slippery slope, you know? And I understand it can be very difficult, but it filters into all kinds of other issues that we're running into, not just here, but across our nation, with boys and girls in locker rooms, with, you know, share of, you know, all the stuff that we see, we see going on that can be very uncomfortable. And it's what we feed into their minds that forms their character, right? And we as pastors, is my time up? Okay, all right. Well, I just want to say, we as pastors, often, a lot of times, we deal with the after effects of this, with the sexual exploitation and that kind of thing. And then our communities deal with it and suicide rates are going up. And so we just want to make you aware and, you know, and ask that you look into it. Thank you, appreciate it.
That's my husband, Sherrod. I just want to thank you first for being involved in the Mount Vernon Schools and to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And what you would imagine, it's your daughter's 15th birthday party with her friends and family gathered around. Are you going to give her a copy of The Girls in Translation and maybe have a read, a little bit of this to the group? "He caught me wipe the sleeve and his hands were pulling me back. I closed my eyes, I felt his arms go around me, and before I knew it, his hands went under my shirt, stroking and tantalizing. He kissed me and I stopped breathing. He was filled with need, he seemed unable to control himself. Wait, I whispered. He already had my shirt off. We fell back on the pile of stuffed animal blankets. He pinned me to the mattress, his weight was delicious. Now he was moving slips against mine, agonizing and luscious. The brush of stubble against my temple, the sweep of the hair. I feel I couldn't breathe, I couldn't move. I was his and he was mine. I could feel the heat of men burning through his wet clothes. He was man possessed by grief and passion together. Finally, I made myself say very clearly, we have to use a condom. With some embarrassment, he regained control of himself. He took a deep, shuddering breath and said, I have a couple in my wallet. Let's use two, I said, just to be sure. Okay. But once he started to kiss me again, the taste and smell of him overwhelmed me and I became frantic to get his clothes off too. I felt hypnotized, as if it was a dream. And I kept thinking, this is Matt, he's mine now, mine at last. I looked at him up close and he was more beautiful than I ever imagined. The shimmer of his eyelashes, the thin white scar that ran across his collarbone, the darkened hollow of his throat. Despite all my experimentation, I'd never been naked with a man before and Matt's skin felt warm and rough. He must have taken care of the condom somehow and suddenly he was inside of me. I gasped, but it hadn't occurred as much as expected it to, and then I couldn't think of it anymore." This is a book that's in the Mount Vernon Middle School library, and I don't think any of you would want your 15-year-old child to be reading this book. Enclosed in these packets, and I'm going to hand you, is a statement from the U.S. Department of Justice website that discusses obscenity. "Federal law strictly prohibits distribution of obscene matters to minors. Any transfer to attempt to transfer such matters to a minor under the age of 16, including over the internet, is punishable under federal law. In addition, visual representations such as drawings, cartoons, or paintings that appear to depict minor engagement in sexual activity are obscene and also illegal under federal law. It appears that the members of the board, the superintendent, some of the librarians must be guilty of trafficking in pornography to our children. I point this out because if you're not interested in taking care of our children by not providing pornography, maybe you'd be interested in saving yourself from serious legal action that might land you behind bars or at minimum expose you to a lot of public exposure for the role of your child abuse. I suggest you read the handout in entirety and not ignore it. It may be a good starting point for discussion for your attorneys." And I have a handout I'd like to give you all. I sent all of these to you at the beginning of last week, I believe. I know, Mrs. Bennett, you also responded to it and I appreciate it.
While she's handing that out, we don't usually respond to comments during the meeting, but I will say that I did get a copy of the email as well. And out of my quick interest, I wanted to see if we had these books. Six of the 13 books we do have. I've not read the six books that we have. I mean, there's, obviously, there's seven that we didn't. We have 27,000 copies of books in the middle school library. And, and there's two real distinctions I think it's really important to make clear. There's books that we mandate our children to read, okay? Those might be the ones that they're reading in class together as a, as a novel or a book. And so when we mandate those kind of books, certainly we have to be even more sensitive as to what we're doing. When you get 27,000 copies of other things that kids get to check out, we certainly have the ability, you have the ability, to preview those if you want to bring those to the board out of concern. We do have a process for that and I think, Mrs. Tickle, that I sent you something relative to getting together, I would share with you what that process is. Needless to say, I do take censoring and banning books seriously. We've got to be really careful, it is a slippery slope and that's why we do have a process. And it involves making sure we read a book in its entirety and that we have a form that's filled out and it will reference page and concern. And then there's a committee that gets together and they look at that together and determine the context and those kinds of things. And ultimately, they'll make some decisions based upon those books. I will say that several years ago, we instituted a policy across the district, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but we wanted to make sure our parents had, were able to have conversations with their students about books they checked out. So there is no student that can check out a book that you don't get an email about. And we did that for you, as parents, to kind of help monitor what your children read. You can only imagine with 27,000 copies, probably over decades, that that allows you to have that very personal conversation about a book that your son or, or daughter might read. And we thought that was a really nice safeguard to make sure we had in place. And, and some folks just don't know about those, right? And so we do take those matters seriously. I know it's a hot topic. We know it's a hot topic and we're very cognizant of that and we'll address it when, when, you know, we kind of bring it through a process. Is that fair?
I also would like to comment. I think that there's a big difference whether we have books on display and are encouraging students to read them, or whether they're on an online website that is promoted by the state or approved by the Ohio Department of Education. And those, we don't have as much control over. You can't very well say, you know, of these, you know, 100,000 books, we're going to just take it out. But I think you mentioned the process, which I think is a good one. And I also think that we need to realize that this is an opportunity for you while your child is still in your home, to talk with them about what they're reading, to help them make good choices while you're there before they leave your home and are making choices. We can't control all the evil in the world, but you can certainly teach your children to make good choices and to choose things that, that you want them to read and to be with. to make their choices and to choose things that you want them to read and to uphold your values. So I would think of it as a learning opportunity as well, but.
Can I just leave one comment? That I spoke to the State Board of Education President, and she said that it is at the local level that you are supposed to take care of this issue. So I don't know if it's going to do any good to go to the State Board and say anything about the books that they are promoting here. They say it's on you. So.
I'm just saying, we have books that we purchase, but we also have online websites that our students have access to. So I don't know which it is. I haven't.
InfoOhio serves all the districts in the state of Ohio from a library perspective, and they have a lot of online books. I don't know if our students have InfoOhio accounts or not. I'd have to double-check that. But again, there is a process for that, and we want to be mindful of that. And we'll address those as we need to address them. I'd be interested when we're done, the book you were kind of reciting from, you know, of the ones I checked, we had six of those books of the 13 in our library currently. Be interested if that was one of them or if it was.
It was not. This was one I just heard about recently, so, or that I found recently in books of the library here.
But we do have it in our library?
Yes, ma'am.
In our middle school library, our high school library?
Do you know the title of that one? You can.
Yeah, Girl in Translation.
Girl in Translation.
My jeans.
K W O K. That wasn't on this, that wasn't on this list. Must be a different.
No, like I said, it was just something recently I read about. It was after I sent that out.
We got the middle school principal?
Okay, moving ahead, we have Tom Pappas.
Thanks so much. Wife Christie and I are relative newbies here in Mount Vernon, we've been here a couple years. I'm here recurrently because of my understanding that the book from which this lady just quoted is in your middle school library. I'm not going to pretend to know that I know a lot that I don't, so I'm going to take a very small portion of my time to tell you just a little bit about who I am. I, in fact, was dean of students at Worthington Kilburn High School in the years that the president of the High Education Association was a history teacher with us. He could see concerning my commitment to fairness in student advocacy. I am certified in English, I have a bachelor's in history, so I have a broad liberal arts education. I'm very much of an advocate of artistic license and progressive thinking. But to think that a book like this, from which Melody has quoted, is in a middle school library, to me, that goes beyond the pale of giving students an opportunity to make wise decisions. That kind of literature should absolutely be precluded from, you know, shelf life in a middle school. And again, I don't think we can just chalk it up to provincial thinking or closed-mindedness. Unfortunately, as a dean, for the years that I was at Worthington Kilburn, I know what it's like to have parents come in with turnies and tape recorders. So I regret never having come here before this occasion to tell you thank you for the investment you're making in young people's lives. The occasion is fact, in fact, is now, and I have understood that there's an issue, but thanks for your gracious to give me this and appreciate you willing to stay here.
And we have Tracy Gray.
Hi. I'm on the same lines, and actually, I have copies of books, and then there's summaries. If you want to take the time, you know, and I can pick them up, you know, when I'm done, can just look at some of the summaries of the books in line. And some help to the audience, too. And that's all I really have. Thank you.
Do you know, do we have these, do you think, or?
Yes, they are, they are. Yeah, I took it off right off the.
Tracy, you were in the libraries and found these books, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mount Vernon Middle School.
And we have Ashley Vance.
Hi, my name is Ashley Vance. I'm not from here, I'm a transplant, but we moved here. I've been part of tutoring, or mentoring, or coaching Mount Vernon youth for about 10 years. So, I mean, we're all here for the same reason, we're all here for kids. I'm hands-on mom, I don't leave my kids at practice when they play sports. I can volunteer, I want to know what they're doing, I want to be part of it, I want to know what they're learning, I want to know who's interacting with them. So also as parents, we make mistakes. So I had something slip through my fingers. I'm disappointed in myself and also how the school is handling it. I got a paper, found it bundled up in the bottom of my daughter's bookbag yesterday. It was about a sexual education video for fifth grade that is being shown. The only way to not have your child see that video is to sign the form opting out. Mr. Cedar, you mentioned that every time my child takes a book out of the library, I get an email. I look at those. I see those every time, I see those every week. Every time they go on a field trip, if they want to be part of the Rocks program with Mrs. Valentine, if they want to participate in steam club, I have to sign a paper saying they can do that. So why, was my only option of opting out, I had to sign a form, and I had to trust that my child gave it to me, so I had the opportunity, that she didn't want to go because that's what her friends were doing, and just not turn it in. I'm assuming that those decisions are made by the board, because I spoke to Mrs. Shively this afternoon. She explained to me that that is a Mount Vernon City school policy, it's not an East Elementary policy. That's a conversation for me to have with my child. I have talked to my child about that, I have educated her appropriately. I don't want the school to do that. That's my right as a parent, that I feel like you all have taken something from me. I understand why you want to teach that in your schools. I understand there are a lot of parents that aren't having those hard conversations, but that's not me. I have an email, I have a phone number, I respond well every time the school has ever contacted me with a problem, inappropriately. That's why I'm here tonight to make you aware. I don't think that it's appropriate that I only had one opportunity to opt out. I should have had more opportunities. It should have come in an email form, it should have come in a text message form, I should have had a phone call, it should have been something, somewhere, because when I sign up on my portal, when I update that for you all every year, I provide you with my phone number, and I provide you with my email, respond to remind messages, class dojo, nothing came but this one piece of paper. So I want you all to just recognize that I feel like there's a missed opportunity there, that people are, people's children are being talked to or shown things. I don't know what was in the video that they saw. I've asked for a copy, I have not received that back. But I'm not happy that that happened because I'm a responsible parent, and I feel like it should be my right to teach my child those. I feel like that's a health issue that shouldn't be taught at home if that's what I choose to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I certainly will find an opportunity to get you a copy. They've been showing that video for years and years as part of the curriculum. I think it's actually done by the Health Department, so I don't, I, before, maybe we think it's got something really salacious in it, I'd love for you to get a copy and chance to see it. But I understand what you're saying about the opt-out, but I honestly, in my time here, 10 years, I've never had.
And my girls saw it when they were in, it's a fifth grade film that all students watch, and the boys and girls, so it has been going on for a number of years, and it is done by the Health Department.
I thought it was more about hygiene and.
It is.
Conveniency.
Yes.
And I don't know, I haven't seen it, I've asked, but just as they're stating, they have books that are in your middle school and your high school, I don't know what was in it. Whether I, when I see the video, whether I agree with what's in it or not, I would have opted out for my child, and I feel like I should have had an additional way to opt out. The children could have just not turned those papers in because they wanted to do what their friends were doing. I don't think it's fair to parents.
With our instant connect, it would have been easy to send a text.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And those are the end of our comments. At this time, for anybody who would like to leave.
You could stay for the business. Mr. Gross.
We have some more board items, so we can skip to additions and deletions.
Did you have a number of? There was two different ones, and I didn't know the difference. Because we probably should take care of this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Under additions and deletions, we do have fiscal services, donations from the First Christian Church under business services. It was actually in the wrong section. The nationwide MOU should have been in items for consideration and not informational items. And in the personnel, certificated staff, we have a substitute teacher, and unfortunately, another resignation. So we wanted to make sure we added those items or adjusted those items as necessary.
Thank you, and if you'd like to go.
I would. I have just a brief update, it seems like we just, recently, and I may, I feel like I want to play it, but I know we've had a little longer meeting than maybe we have traditionally done, but I won't do the whole slideshow, I'll just move these things down. So Senior Citizens Luncheon is Thursday, and we're excited about that again. You know, we kind of put some deadlines in there to let us know, but trust me, we keep taking them and taking them and taking them, and we had a few calls today. So anybody who's interested in the Senior Citizens Luncheon, there it is. This is one that, you know, if I felt like we had time, or if you say, Bill, show this, I would like to do that, but Senior Alex Buer is part of our Global Scholars Diploma Group, and his project was selected above a lot of folks to be part of this panelist on WBNS Channel 10 TV. His video that he put together is really, really well done. It's eight minutes long, and so maybe I should, I would just encourage you to go in and look at it, but he's got some nice footage, music, his voiceovers, and again, really well done. And I will say.
Can we ask the board?
You want to see it quick?
I'd like to see it.
Any minute?
Sure. I think it's worth it.
Let's do it, then.
I feel as though, as Americans, we forget about many of the struggles in the rest of the world. I mean, it's hard to remember what's happening in small nations everywhere when we have the luxury of smartphones and social media. And obviously, we aren't without our own problems, but as a whole, many of us find ourselves living relatively comfortably. Since the pandemic, food insecurity has been on the rise worldwide, now affecting about 10% of the world's population. American statistics correspond to that number, about an even 10%, and while it's a terrible issue, many are fortunate enough to either have the government or private organizations step in to help bring food to the table. That said, it's no surprise here that other nations don't quite have the same support. Guatemala, a Central American powerhouse, at least in GDP, it's hard to think that a nation with such a robust economy and billions of dollars of foreign investment each year consistently finds ridiculous amounts of its population living in states of acute malnutrition. However, the World Health Organization claims that some 75% of the rural population lives on less than 15 Guatemalan quetzales, or about $2 US dollars a day. This constant state of poverty has caused an epidemic in malnutrition, especially seen in the children of the rural or isolated communities of the country. UNICEF claims that one in two children experience a lack of access to food and chronic malnutrition, making it one of the highest percentages in the world, the highest in Latin America. When I was 11, my family and I actually had the opportunity to go to Guatemala on a service trip, and this experience completely changed my mentality and really shaped the next few years of my life, as I got to see the struggles of a typical person in semi-rural Guatemala and what was being done to help. Working with the organization Small Change for Big Change, who you should totally look up because they do really great work, in the town of Santa Catarina Barahona, we installed stoves in the houses of families who promised to send their kids to English school. This was a win-win for the families, as the common method of open fire cooking is really dangerous, and the ability to speak English in Guatemala is extremely lucrative. The hope was that these children would, once they grew up, have jobs that were sufficient enough to properly take care of their families and lift them out of poverty. Through this experience, my family and I got a glimpse into the typical life of many Guatemalans, a state of some level of poverty and hunger, even in a town located only an hour away from the large tourist city of Antigua. Among other things, what struck me at the time was the fact that a small, private organization had to step in to help solve the problem in their own community. The lack of real government support, at least in the mostly isolated village nestled in a valley, was a big surprise for a kid coming from the U.S. However, given the living conditions of the people, I was particularly intrigued with their attitudes. Throughout the trip, almost every family would offer some kind of meal to us, the weird gringos, even with as little as they had. Their attitude towards their lives and the positive outlooks many of them had inspired me to spread their positivity into parts of my own life. After all, if they could smile despite their circumstances, I certainly could as well. During our time in Guatemala, we worked closely with Irvin Dumania. In fact, he acted as a sort of mentor for me throughout the trip, teaching me the value of understanding those you serve by realizing their situations. Through his work with Small Change for Big Change, he came to realize that there is an incredible value in helping those who really want to help themselves. Since 2016, he started a for-profit farm named Cuarto Reshu Yu, offering free lessons and education to villagers who want to learn how to grow their own food, whether for hunger or for profit. Through this farm, he's able to demonstrate how easy it is for people who are willing to try to gain a better nutritional balance for themselves and for their family. For this project, I had the pleasure of interviewing him to gain his insight into the current state of hunger in Guatemala and what's being done to combat it. Irvin explained to me the difficulty of finding people who are really willing to put in the effort to help themselves. As he said, since the introduction of junk food, many families are much more willing to buy cheap food that's terrible for them instead of taking the time to focus on their nutrition. At least in his experience, the cause of malnutrition, especially among the youth, doesn't stem from a lack of opportunities, healthy food, or education, especially in towns like Santa Catarina Barahona, but rather from people themselves not caring enough to make their nutrition valuable. Something that piqued my interest was how he mentioned governmental help, specifically the allocation of food. Given Guatemala's reputation as an incredibly malnourished country, nations like the United States and Japan send over lots of food and money explicitly for the purpose of assisting the end of hunger in the nation. However, Irvin explained that the allocation of food follows an incredibly corrupt system. As the federal government controls the distribution of food, they can decide when and where it goes. According to Irvin, they stockpile the food until the voting season, upon which politicians in power give the food to districts that voted for them, think Guatemala City and the other major cities in the nation, and not those more marginalized or isolated communities who need it the most. And this really discouraged me, especially his openness and knowledge that his own government was willing to withhold valuable resources from the communities that needed them simply to ransom them and into giving politicians more votes. And my only hope is that this becomes more common knowledge in the hands of those who can use it to turn the tides and help those in smaller communities have the voices they need to really solve this nationwide issue. However, it was Irvin's farm work that really inspired me. As a part of my Global Scholars Project, I thought it would be interesting and helpful to track my experiences as a son of two teachers who worked on a raspberry farm last summer, trying to grow some of the same things that Irvin does while keeping my costs as low as possible. To start, I went to Foresters, a local seed and gardening shop, to find my materials, organic seeds and some potting soil. Fortunately, they had exactly what I needed, organic packets of radish, beet, carrot, and lettuce seeds, and the potting soil that would allow me to test the waters of my indoor gardening. Altogether, this came to $21.06. And to clarify, I didn't include the cost of water, location, or tools necessary to start the seeds. Santa Catarina Barahona is fortunate enough to have easy access to water, which I've come to learn is a commodity in other parts of the nation, and many plots of land in town are available to be farmed, and finally, tools can be borrowed from neighbors. After getting the seeds and soil, the only thing left to do was get to work. The last few weeks for me have been a constant checkup on the plants, watering them about every other day, according to my research, and checking their growth. And at the time of recording this, I haven't actually been able to harvest, although as you can see, everything seems to be coming in just fine. We're done, baby. I've always been interested in sharing stories, finding value in those of other people and cultures that help give a better understanding of who we are. And this project has taught me that our problems connect us and show that we are more universal than you'd think. Hunger is an issue across the globe, and although it's handled in different ways, it's something that really unites us, it's something that we, as a world, can come together and put a stop to. And while there are a billion people and organizations helping worldwide, I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring too with gardens. This Gardens Project has taught me that the roots of our problems are more connected than we might think. This connection can be seen as a bad thing, revealing the universality and widespread issue of hunger, but I like to think of it in a more positive way that I think I learned in Guatemala. If you wallow in your problems, nothing will change. But if you recognize that you can truly do something to help your life or the life of someone else, this connection is the most powerful tool you have. And that's exactly what Gardens does, plant seeds of hope in an effort to help humans stay connected, educated and conscious. One seed, one person, and one garden at a time.
Great, wow. Very impressive.
You can see why he was probably picked. He'll be on this panel tomorrow and so. They put that together on their own computer with digital footage and voiceover and things like that. I will say that we have 44 students now participating in the Global Scholars Diploma Program. And they're just getting some really valuable experiences, seeing the world in a different light. And you know, we're so, could be so focused right here on Mount Vernon that we kind of get insulated as to what the world is all about. So there's some other wonderful projects that we're doing. His just happened to be highlighted and I thought it was appropriate to highlight it for you there.
Do we have any opportunity for the community to see their projects?
We did put this on our website. And I know John, John has it there. And I know a year or two ago, I think we even had Kaitochev came in and shared some other projects that were going on. This one just happened to kind of catch, catch that idea. And then the last thing I have in my short time, Stephanie Plumley is our FFA of OAG advisor. And she is being recognized by the Ohio Education Association as an education champion. And so this is real quick.
The Ohio Education Association congratulates Stephanie Plumley, AG educator and FFA advisor at Mount Vernon High School, this week's education champion.
One of my favorite things about teaching would be exposing students to new experiences. I enjoy taking them out of the classroom. We do a lot of outdoor activities, charter fishing trips on Lake Erie, we've tapped maple trees and boiled down sap for syrup. So those kind of experiences, the kids just don't typically get from home anymore.
Really a quick 30-minute plug for Stephanie, but it's a plug for our program and, and the school, so we're proud of her efforts there as well, so.
I'm really sorry that I dismissed people. I thought it was a good time to leave, but it should have been there.
Under item B, which are the items for board approval tonight, we've had these board policies for the past two months. It's a, it's a larger group than normal, but a lot of them are kind of, just kind of technical correction kinds of things. Some are certainly more relevant, like the meeting the state standards, you know, we used to be an A through F system. We're now a five-star system, so they had to go in and change those things. Volunteers is now changed to a pupil activity permit, so most of them are pretty simple. So we had that group that was volume 41. They had some special technology updates that were just about technology. And then they also had a tobacco update, and a lot of those are just very simple for your approval. And then the second item here is to recommend the board approve the master mechanic position to be added to the OPEC master agreement. So unfortunately, we had our bus mechanic leave for a new job. And we've had a really hard time trying to find qualified mechanics at the level that they come in at on the negotiated agreement for OPEC. And working very closely with OPEC and trying to get creative, we just, we were able to create a separate master mechanic scale, even though it's really a, a one-person scale. Be more clear about what we're looking for there, and we were able to set a rate that we felt like we could at least compete to get someone. As you well know, we have 22 full-time routes. We need a, we need a true head bus mechanic that can keep our fleet running and on the road. So those two items for your approval tonight.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve those two items, is read.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai, you have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, and were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Ward, yes. Mr. Wardman, yes. Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. Okay, student achievement liaison report. Success for this year, I picked four to briefly mention. The first is pretty interesting, it's about a school in Texas, Robstown Early College High School. And they offer a veterinary medical program that students can earn a TEA-approved industry certification and veterinary assisting that will help them qualify for a job at an animal clinic. And the instructor teaches principles of agriculture and the students learn handling, nutrition, suturing, injection, grooming, charting, and how to become a vet tech. And this has become a really popular program, apparently. The second one is ChatGPT sends shockwaves across college campuses. And the reason is because ChatGPT doesn't copy old words. So that I had a professor tell me once that one of the funniest things that ever happened was when he received identical papers from two different students because they both purchased them. Unfortunately, they both purchased the same paper.
Andrew's wasn't there.
Anyway, ChatGPT is harder to spot because it doesn't copy old words, it creates new ones, and that complicates the task of identifying cheating. But these are some ways that professors have worked around that, by using small seminars. And an English professor at the University of Central Oklahoma has students submit papers in three rounds of review. One from peers, one from the professor, and then one from chat box itself will give you the feedback and tell you what it thinks about what you've written. So that's how to combat that, I guess. And then the third article is on five ways to make your science classroom more culturally responsible. Excuse me, responsive. And the third and the fifth, the questions I thought were probably the most interesting. Facilitate student-led inquiry and experiential learning. And they gave an example, in a physics class, students explored concepts of sound and energy through learning about musical instruments in various cultures and how they employ the principles of sound to create music. Students engaged in the engineering design process to create and test their own musical instruments, such as they would investigate how you manipulate the aspects of the instrumental design, such as the length of the woodwind or the tension on the strings, et cetera, and how that would impact the sound and, the sound created and then why, and that would be the science involved. And then the fifth was to provide positive role models for students by inviting members of the community from diverse cultural backgrounds to discuss careers and experiences. And such as the STEM talks that they, monthly series that they host. And one of the teachers commented, if students can see it, they can be it, especially if they're seeing people of their own culture who are successful in those fields. And then the sixth one is addressing middle schoolers' reading gaps and bridging foundational reading gaps in middle school. Teachers at the secondary level really had little knowledge or training in foundational reading skills in order to comprehension. And they underwent some literary and literacy instruction, excuse me. And I had a summer reading invitational for four weeks, three hours in the AM and three in the PM at the school. And they kept their numbers very small so that instruction would be intense. And the results say down that all students except one gained from three to five levels on the phonological awareness screening test, which was passed, PSAT. And also observed gains in vocabulary, stamina, discussion skills, and general attitude toward reading. So they hope to continue to do that. And they mentioned two, two gains that were very effective. And then they, they were the daily word ladders by Timothy Rosensky for fourth through sixth grade, and then daily word ladders idioms for fourth, grade, fourth grade and above. And that was one of the comments that I thought was interesting. Some of the students said, you know, these are baby courses because they're learning phonics and things that they should have learned in third grade or earlier. But they tried to combat that with using these types of texts with the ladders because they were, they tended to be fun, so the kids didn't mind that. And then the research article is really on autism in the US and pointing out how it's on the rise. But they, the authors felt that this reflects the increased identification of children at younger ages, such as four-year-olds. And they used the data from 11 states and over a quarter million students, 226,339 special education records is where they gleaned their data. So any questions?
We're getting a little spooky, I think, as time's gone on.
This morning, I guess I will make a comment. This morning, Andrew Lloyd Webber was speaking about the closing of Phantom of the Opera on Broadway. And he mentioned that AI is being used to create new music, but some of the music has become more popular in Australia by AI than some of the writers and composers. So I think it's something that we're going to all have to address eventually, it's out there.
My husband gave me a whole page article, I didn't have time to read it, but on AI in the paper. Yes, it's something you're going to have to deal with.
We have one item in this section for board approval tonight, it's the FFA National Convention next year in Indianapolis, Indiana on November 4th. So that's an FFA.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that item.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wardman, were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman, yes. Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. And you're up on treasure.
You can't blow past the good stuff.
Yeah.
No, it's great stuff.
Better not. I let two of our members know at our preview that we have done some additional investing. Actually did it because the board gives me authority in our January meeting. Actually did it right before the major bank collapse, so I was very nervous. And so I was reassured that we had no investments that would be at that level of risk. So we've got some additional money out there, we've been able to get, you know, what seems, you know, very small, 2%, 3% and 4%, but compared to what we were getting is just a massive increase. So excited about that, excited to continue to see that grow, you know. And that's year-to-date, I mean.
Yeah.
That could be up, up a year. Well done.
Not better than the year before.
Typical monthly report, I will point out, you see the top line, you see a negative number. But you'll see fiscal year-to-date, we've had $17 million and some change come in from general property tax. What we do is we receive our advances, and most of you are very familiar with this. And then we take the fees out at the very end. So just in this cycle, we got about $9 million that came in, and then obviously the county, we pay their fees and we take it out of the last settlement, so to speak. So that's why you see a negative number there, it's just us paying the fees to the county. You see some pub money in there, which we like to see. Obviously, our monthly state foundation comes twice a month. So you're used to all of those other things. I will point out one other thing, it was a three-pay month, which I've mentioned before. We all love because there's no insurance fees that come out of that and no association or OPEC fees come out of it. But it's, it's not great for the bottom line. We all love it when we get the paycheck, so.
Two sides to it.
Yeah, that's, that's really it. If you continue to scroll down, you'll see the additional general fund dollars, next page, Mr. Cedar.
So we had about $700,000 invested, we've actually, we increased it by a million dollars just because we're setting on cash as a result of the SFR funding. As we all know, that's going to rapidly decrease, but while we have it, we ensure we put it in stuff that we could claw back if needed. We like, the bottom line is really important for me because I want to have the flexibility to be able to bring money back if needed within the district. So we don't want to invest it all, five years, and have to take a penalty if we would need to draw it back in.
And maybe you should explain to the public that public entities like schools have certain restrictions.
I don't point this out most months because oftentimes, you know, we've invested in a commercial paper or something and we just wait and then we get our, so it doesn't, it'll change rapidly and then not change at all for a while. So, but as Dr. Bennett pointed out, we are highly regulated in terms of where we can invest money. I can't just willy-nilly decide to buy, you know, Apple stock or whatever. So we work with Meter who ensures we meet all of the regulations that are levied on schools and public entities. So we have very low risk, but because we have very low risk, sometimes our, our yields aren't super productive. But it's been a good year and I'll take it.
Well, that's it in terms of that. I do have an amendment and I mentioned in preview that I need, I gotta do a much better job of my estimating when we budget this, but this is a general fund, so it doesn't give me too much cause for concern. This is a 300 fund, which consists of everything from athletics to, you know, we, we've ramped up our plays and our form shows again. And I didn't take those into consideration when we put out our initial appropriations. So they are spending a lot of money because they're making a lot of money, which is a good thing. So this doesn't impact general fund dollars, this is all essentially gate receipts that are being brought in and then spent on our students. So I don't mind seeing it, I just need to do a better job estimating. I think I have one donation and then also the donation that Mr. Cedar mentioned earlier in regards to the additions. We had the donation from the First Christian Church. And we also have a donation here, well, you've got it on here, First Christian Church to the Columbia PTO in the amount of $100. Greatly appreciate the First Christian Church for that donation, we are grateful.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve those fiscal services items, is read.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai, were there any questions? I guess I'd just like to comment, I appreciate, I know it's stressful to try to manage all that, but we appreciate your investing the money and all of that. Making a little extra for us, thank you for taking that initiative.
You're welcome. Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. Legislative liaison report.
Thank you, I have just a brief outline. The House and Senate were on recess and they were coming back today at the State House. But prior to the recess, several bills were introduced. HB 145 is in regard to purchasing authority for construction services. HB 146 would establish a contribution-based benefit cap in calculating a school employee's retirement system member's retirement benefit. 147 would make changes to teacher license revocation, hiring practices and conduct unbecoming to the teaching profession. SB 104 would make changes to the College Credit Plus program. And HB 135 would require schools to provide excused absences for. for students to participate in four-H and F F A programs. H B one thirty-seven would require O D E to study the feasibility of implementing a similar program to the Kentucky Bluegrass Challenge Academy. And just a note that I did send emails to the two sponsors of the Backpack Bill, telling them that I would appreciate it if they would just fund public education amply and not divide up the pie. That's all I have right now. Are any questions or anybody you want me to contact at the State House? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple items for board approval in this section. The first are facility use requests. We have a community concert association would like to use the high school theater to do the Winds of Ohio choral group. They found themselves in a real tough spot because they were doing some updating in memorial theaters. They didn't have a place to do it. So they contacted us, and we're going to be like State Farm and be a good neighbor. And then the other one is for maximum nutrition. They're going to do some cardio drumming at Pleasant Street Elementary on Tuesdays. So those two facility use requests. And again, I mentioned in the earlier part of our meeting, this memorandum of understanding with Nationwide Children's Hospital. As you look through that document, the steering committee has been working on the operations side of things. We feel really good with where we're at. I think the one thing that hopefully can leave some comforts are some folks who just continue to maybe be a little bit skeptical about the fact that we want to help, you know, kids. But probably that other worry, we have a severability clause in this M O U that provides us thirty days. And now we always would try to work out our differences, and hopefully we have no differences. But we have been very, very clear from the beginning about parent involvement and parents being part of the process. Nobody can be seen without parental consent. No matter what legislation is out there, I've heard some legislation might be out there that may try to do away with parental consent. We just, I believe as a board, and as a community, feel like we want parents to be informed about what's happening there. I trust that they're going to continue to meet those, you know, for us. They're looking probably to do an open house, probably within the month, just to kick things off. We're talking to them now about just having some, an opportunity to share fire information with parents to get those forms out if they want their kids to be involved, to ask any questions they might want to have, to tour the facility, and those kinds of things. So just letting you know, that's kind of around the corner. So those two items for your approval.
I would entertain a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Mr. Wardman, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And I guess the form is that the student has to have it filled out before they're seen. So it wouldn't be that anything could happen like what parent mentioned.
They shouldn't see anybody unless they have a parental consent form on file.
Any other questions? It's exciting. It's a really neat facility for those that haven't been there yet. And if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying.
Nothing from the O H S A A, I don't think. And one item for board approval for Licking Rehab Associates. We'll do some work with them for occupational physical therapy services. Sorry, Pam.
Standard.
You've studied just fine.
Anything you'd like to add on that?
Not anything.
Also, one item for your approval tonight.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Licking Rehab Association.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Outstanding.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. And there's this mail, certificate of license.
We have no items for information tonight, but a number of items for board approval. We've broken this up into two sections. And the first, you'll see a few retirements. And again, hopefully, we get a chance to honor and recognize those folks at our next board meeting, which will probably then be moved over to, I think we'll be moving over to Twin Oak just because it provides a little bit more room. John will really be after me about not wanting to move because he's going to get the technology down here. And yet, at the same time, it might be a challenge. We could, we'll work that out. But Sabrina Pugh is going to be retiring, Susan Rice, we got their retirement information. We have a number of resignations. You'll see there the toughest one, actually, really two tough ones for Pam, Aiden, a school psychologist, are so hard to come by. He's taking a job almost in his backyard, so it's really, it's hard to be disappointed or mad at him, of course, but, and then, of course, speech-language pathologists are just really hard to come by as well. So we have a couple continuing contracts for substitute teachers and supplemental contracts for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve those items. That's red.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Wardman. And were there any questions? I see some longtime teachers on the air. If you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying.
We will be offering summer school again this year, and that will be free to our students who need that summer school support. We'll be utilizing some S R dollars to help support that. And you've approved a number of summer school supplementals. This is one we pulled out separate for Jill McCourt for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Outstanding.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. Thank you. And classified staff.
Our last section tonight, our classified staff, one item for information. Christine Holman will be transferring from her twelve-month maintenance secretary to assist Gary in the teacher's office. Christine does just an outstanding job. Rick has been over multiple times. He has threatened to not clean Gary's office. Their unsecured office. They're all good, but she'll be missed there, but she'll certainly be welcomed in central office. So wanted to put that transfer in for your approval. And then for items recommended for board approval, we have just a number of items, a couple two-year contracts, some summer work crew folks to help us in the summer. It's interesting, we're already talking about summer work crews. And then we do have one resignation. That was our bus mechanic. And that really has prompted us to kind of begin to really look far and wide for someone.
I would entertain a motion to approve those staff items. That's red.
So moved.
Thank you. Getzmann.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wardman. And were there any questions?
Mrs. Getzmann.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes. Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. Thank you. Board member comments, I would just like to take the opportunity to wish everyone the final countdown if there are another six and a half weeks for students and teachers. So that's exciting. And I guess I just encourage parents and students to finish strong, to work hard, and finish what you've started, and do a good job here at the end. Don't give up right here at the end, but continue to work hard and do your best. And we wish you well, and I hope everyone had a great spring break that refreshed you and ready to come back and finish the race. I'm trying to remember who I didn't start with last time. I think it maybe is your turn.
Is it? All right. Yeah, I'd like to thank those that came or listening in tonight. And also, you know, as we wrap up the school year, thank all the administrative, administration and staff. It seems like it's been a very good year, a lot of positive things happening. I did get to tour the health-based facility on Thursday with Gary, with the grand tour. Beautiful facility, ready to go, so it looks, it looks great. It really does.
Okay, Mr. Ward.
Well, for everybody, first, I have to thank my wife and her colleague for their fabulous presentation on the tutoring program that they've instituted. I've gotten to watch it behind the scenes, and they're, they're doing some good things. I'm hearing good things all along the way. So I think the other thing I want to thank, first, is to recognize, you know, a reminder that, you know, the principal, Darren Prince, has been on military leave. And really, you know, now that we're toward the end of the school year, really want to thank, you know, Rob Rose and Rob Elliott and Jim Rader for stepping up and moving into those roles for us this year. It has been a good year to have, you're right. So just want to thank them publicly for stepping in for our middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you to those who are here and who are watching at home. I'd like to congratulate our In the Know team. They had a good showing. And I think they have an upcoming event. I can't remember if it's this month or in May, here at our facility, no, at the public library. And I'd also like to congratulate all of our students and administrators and teachers. Where would we be without them, and where would we be without a supportive community? Everything that we do is for the children, and I think that shows in a very, very positive light to our community. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Just thank you. I know we are in the midst of state testing, and that's always high tension, high stress for our, those that are executing tests and mailing tests and accounting for tests and taking tests and the teachers and all of those. So I just say to parents, rest is key, routine is key, and good nutrition during this time. So good luck to all the teachers and the students as they embark on the dreaded state test.
And I'd like to wish those who are in the play, I've heard from some parents how excited the kids are to produce this play, Cinderella. So I hope it goes well and they can have as much fun as they think.
I'm sure it's going to be.
On Thursday at our senior citizens' time together, we're going to share a few forum highlights, as you heard Ella mention. They had some fun, but also, we're going to have about a fifteen-minute snippet of Cinderella.
Oh, good.
Just to give our seniors a kind of a glimpse in, almost like a trailer. And I think maybe we'll find some seniors wanting to come on Friday or Saturday to see the coal production. That's it. No need for.
I would entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay. Do I have a second?
Second, Pam.
Thank you, Mr. Getzmann. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Golladay.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, and we officially. Thank you all for coming and staying with us.